Okay, if everybody please turn in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, when a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody be seated. And we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four. We have a special presentation by Chief DeYoung. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mayor Levy, Council, thank you for taking a little bit of time to take care of a couple of awards that we have to present to two of our officers. Nowadays, there's so much scrutiny for what the police officers do that sometimes we forget some of the good things they do. So tonight, we have two officers I'm going to recognize for their life-saving efforts and life-saving awards I'm going to present to them. First one's going to be for Officer Brian Martinez. Brian, come on up here. On June 10th, 2015, Officer Martinez was dispatched to a burglary in progress. Officer Martinez noticed and contacted a man that was running from the area and then fell on the sidewalk. Through the course of their conversation, it was discovered that the man running from the area was, in fact, a man who has unlawfully entered a building and stolen some property that was now in his jeans. Officer Martinez placed him in custody, and while transporting him to the police department, the man yelled -- the man relentlessly yelled profanities at Officer Martinez. Once they got to the police department, Officer Martinez assisted him out of the police cruiser. The man looked at Officer Martinez with a blank stare, dropped to his knees, and then lost consciousness and quit breathing. Officer Martinez was able to determine that he was on heroin and alcohol at the time before he was arrested, and without skipping a beat, Officer Martinez began CPR and continued until the man gasped for air and regained a pulse. Therefore, the Woodland Park Police Department hereby commands Officer Martinez for taking quick action, which saved the life of a man, and we take pride in issuing this life-saving award to him. Congratulations, Brian. On July 16th, 2015, officers were dispatched to a residence near city limits to report a man that had fallen off a ladder. Officer Couch arrived and determined that the man was not breathing and did not have a pulse. She started CPR in addition to her automated external defibrillator. The AED advised no shock was advised. She continued CPR until the medical personnel arrived and took over her life-saving efforts. Her tireless efforts prolonged the man's life for a few more days, making it possible for friends and family to say goodbye to him. Therefore, the Police Department would like to commend Officer Couch for taking quick action, which prolonged his life, and take pride in issuing the life-saving award to her. Congratulations. Brian, would you come up here, please, and we have something to talk to you about?
I want to talk to you as much as I want to thank you, certainly on behalf of our City Council and the whole staff and the whole community, and hope that what Chief DeYoung said should stop you and that we don't forget the great things you've done for us. And we have a special award, Mayor's pin, for those people in our community that go above and beyond, clearly the two of you have done that. So, thank you very much, and keep doing your great work, and certainly be a great worker.
The dispatchers who were not on duty this evening, they came to honor these two officers. It truly is a great family at our police department.
And we appreciate it. Thank you all for being here. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number Five. I don't believe there's any additions, deletions, or corrections. So we'll move on to the Consent Calendar, and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening on the Consent Calendar, we have the minutes of the October 1st regular City Council meeting, and we have the August 2015 Statement of Expenditures.
Questions, Council? If not, I'm sorry. Great, Suzanne.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, no unfinished business tonight. We'll move on to ordinances on initial posting, and we're going to consider ordinance Number 1252. Aaron Smith, welcome.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I'm filling in for Brian from this evening, but I have for you on initial posting ordinance 1252, which is simply an ordinance that approves the purchase of Lot 2, Vector Bank subdivision, City of Woodland Park. Lot 2 is the parcel that is located -- it was the former --
And that's south of the All-Star.
South of the All-Star Gas Store. And that is a subject to an agreement between the City of Woodland Park and Vector Bank, which is a standard contract for purchasing sale of work property. And the consideration that would be paid for that would include -- would be $100,000. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Everyone familiar with this purchase? Any questions? Terrific.
Move to approve an initial posting. Consideration out of next meeting.
Uh, we're not -- okay, thank you. Anna, second.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, we'll move on to Number Eight B and ordinance Number 1253 on initial posting. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. My name is Laura Peregrino. I'm the City Planner. This is a request by staff for first reading of ordinance Number 1253. This is an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a use change for a proposed microbiology lab to be located in the Neighborhood Commercial Zone, the NC Zone in the city, in the existing building at 106 Village Terrace, Woodland Park, which is Lot 7, The Village, as represented by Nevada Ventures LLC and Brilliant Science Institute. And staff would also request that we set the public hearing for November 5th.
Thanks. Council, any questions on simply on initial posting today?
Move to approve an initial posting.
Great, we have a second. Thank you. No questions, Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Great, thanks very much. We'll move on, Laura, to ordinance Number 1254.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is a request from staff for the first reading for ordinance 1254. It is an ordinance for a conditional use permit and concurrent site plan review for a proposed assisted living facility to be located in the Neighborhood Commercial Zone on Lots 107, 117, 127, and 137, Village Terrace in Woodland Park, Lots 1 through 4 of The Village. This is a request by Woodland Park Storage LLC and RTB Development LLC, and staff does also request that we set the public hearing for November 5th.
Thanks, Laura. I know that's going to be an interesting meeting, a lot of discussion, so November 5th, everybody will remember that. And do you have any questions relative to 1254?
This is a big project, and this is first council's heard of it. I don't remember anything. Maybe I was out. But where is it located again?
It's -- do you know the old Tweeds Building?
Yeah.
Former to the Paradox Building as well. It's immediately west -- east of that.
Behind it.
Um, yeah.
Which was subject to something before. Okay, yes.
Anything else on initial posting?
Move to approve on initial posting.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson? Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, Laura, we'll go for three in a row. Ordinance Number 456.
I'm Anna Will. This is a request by staff to consider ordinance Number 1255 on initial posting. This is an ordinance for a vacation of the Village Terrace right-of-way, as requested by Woodland Park Storage LLC and Nevada Ventures LLC, and it's also a request to set the public hearing for November 5th for this vacation request.
Thank you. Council? No questions.
Move to approve on initial posting.
Number 1255. Got a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Suzanne. Okay, Laura, one more. Number 1256.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is to consider ordinance Number 1256 on initial posting for vacation of the drainage and utility easements given lots 1 through 4 of The Village, as requested by RTB Developments LLC and the Woodland Park Storage LLC, and it's also a request to set the public hearing for November 5th.
Okay. Let's see if we can go five for five here. Four for five.
Move to approve on initial posting.
Second.
Okay, Suzanne?
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Suzanne. Laura, I'm sure we're going to see you on November 5th. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to public hearings, and we're going to start right away with ordinance Number 1244, and Aaron Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Excuse me, I need to recuse myself.
I'm sorry, can I excuse me?
AB and A of the next issue also.
Are we going to stay around so he can see you later?
Well, you've got budget later, so I -- yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Matthews. Mayor and Council, what I will be doing is making a presentation on ordinance 1244, ordinance 1251, and Resolution 796. And so my presentation will be on all of those, and it will be a combined presentation. What I will do for council tonight is first remind you of the procedure, the procedural posture we are at, and recap the procedure we've been through with ordinances 1251, 1244, and Resolution 796. So I'll recap procedures. I will then walk council through the substantive provisions that are the changes that we will be recommending to the administrative regulations that are contained in ordinance 1251, and walk you through the substantive change to Resolution 796. There aren't any changes to ordinance 1244 from what council saw on October 1st, so I will not walk you through any changes to ordinance 1244. And then finally, the third thing, I will be recommending, I will be making a recommendation that council approve both ordinances 1244 and 1251 and Resolution 796 tonight. Let me begin with the procedural posture, or recap the procedure for these pieces of legislation. And let me start by saying that the City Charter requires four affirmative votes in order to pass an ordinance. Actually, we have four council people here tonight. So in order to pass these, we would need four votes. I'll point that out. Then I would go on to say that we have made, I think, great progress. We were tasked by council to sit down and talk with Peak Internet and Peak's council because Peak had provided a number of comments to the form of the administrative regulations and the fee resolution. And we have had those conversations, and I believe we made great progress on those. So I will bring that to council's attention right up front. And I would look out to council for Peak in the audience and expect to see a head nod, so thank you for that. Let me then take you through the procedure. On October 1st, council had a public hearing on both ordinances and took public comment on Resolution 796. Council did not continue the public hearing, rather council tabled final action to tonight on both ordinances and Resolution 796 for the stated purpose of giving Peak Internet and its council time to review the changes made to the administrative regulations contained in ordinance 1251. These changes were ones made to address the specific comments received by Peak Internet on September 28th and Century Link on September 30th. On October 6th, the city attorney and city staff met with Mr. Baker of Peak Internet, his council, Ms. Scott, and Mr. Spivey to go over the October 1st changes to the administrative regulations. The result of that meeting was that the city and Peak had found common ground on a few outstanding issues raised in Peak's September 28 comments, except for the comment regarding jail time as a possible penalty for violating the administrative regulations. In other words, except for the jail issue, the city and Peak had agreement in concept on all outstanding issues. On October 12th, a red line draft of the administrative regulations was given to Peak and put on the city's website on Tuesday, October 13th. This was supplemented on October 14th with one additional change provision Peak requested. Further, in response to comments on the Monday, October 12th draft received today at 3:30 this afternoon, city staff met again with Mr. Baker and his council, and the results of that meeting are a few other changes that I will address later. Which brings us to this evening. The draft of ordinance 1251 and the administrative regulations contained in it is the draft distributed October 12th to Peak Internet and put on the website on October 13th. And it also then contains that change added by the October 14th supplement. So you have in front of you the administrative regulations that we, in concept, had agreements with Peak on, and so those are what I will walk you through. So again, all of the changes, for the most part, in the draft redlined ordinance 1251 are acceptable to Peak. A few needed a few additional rudish smoothing tweaks, which we discussed at our meeting this evening. But I can say now that everything in the draft that I will point out to you tonight will be where we have agreement, and there are no disagreements. There is some further work yet to be done, but I will come back to that further work yet to be done and how to address it. So in that procedural recap, are there any questions from council?
I have kind of a fundamental question. First of all, given the timeliness of this, delivered kind of late in the day, and I work until 6:00 PM, I've not had the time to review it and adequately vet it. So that's a concern, number one. Number two, I am concerned that we have just four people with the absence of councilman Matthews and obviously Schaefer and Soreen. So I just want to entertain the notion that, and discuss whether this is the appropriate night to push this thing through based on those two variables.
Well, as you know, I kind of have the same feelings. Ken will never be available to vote because he's recused himself. One issue could be in favor of Peak Internet if at all possible, because they have a number of issues, they have a number of things that they're waiting for approval for from us, permits. I'm sure they would like to move forward on. We kind of indicated we'd like to do it today, but you certainly have a great point, so we'll have to make that decision. What do you guys think? Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I don't like saying things at the last minute either, and that was one of my conjectures last week. But the difference last week is there was a lot of things that still needed to be resolved for the two sides. People hadn't had time, those who are directly involved in the case, to meet and negotiate, which sounds like you've done pretty successfully. Tonight, you've got the major parties, you know, having come to a, you know, close conclusion, we'll find out what's still missing, and whether or not we can put those things off to a different thing, approve what's the progress to date, hopefully, and then put off the other things, perhaps. But, you know, so long as our city attorney's happy and their attorney's happy, you know, I'm inclined to give the benefit of the doubt on those things where progress has been made to date. So that's one of the --
I have a question for staff. If, in fact, we do put this off, could we allow them to reduce the permits that they're waiting on? If, in fact, it comes to that? Would that be a possibility, or would you prefer that that not be the case?
We would prefer that that not be the case, simply because these ordinances outline the things that need to be included. I respect Councilman Mella's thoughts on this, and my only request would be, if you're leaning towards not doing that, not moving forward, let's cease work very quickly. There's been a lot of folks in the audience who came just for this. We believe, however, that we have, as Councilman Carlson said, addressed all the major issues, and we are doing some fine tuning, some very small fine tuning, in agreement with both Peak Internet and their council. So it would be our recommendation that we move forward so that we don't hold them up. They have multiple permits that they're waiting on until this is resolved, so they can get some last-minute work done before winter sets in. But it's certainly council's decision.
Carol?
Well, I would like to have Erin go through the major changes and then make a decision if that's acceptable to Phil.
Yeah, the only caveat is that I would just say two things. One, irrespective of the fact that both councils approve the changes, to me is immaterial, and I need to make an independent judgment. And secondly, if, you know, we're willing to go through that forbearance of going through it, I, you know, won't be able to guarantee that I can, because it's so newly -- there are a lot of red lines in this document. And so, I respect Peak's level of urgency, given the history, but given the gravity, these changes and the serious implications downstream for not just Peak, but every other entity that seeks access to the right of ways, I would just reserve the right to take a much more deliberative approach.
I agree, but as a staff report, I would like to hear what has transpired in the last two weeks. Two weeks ago, it didn't seem to be too urgent to Peak, but evidently it is tonight.
With that caveat, I'm fine.
Yes, let's do that. And I think that the changes can be addressed as, you know, as substantive changes as we go through them. And we will start with page four of the administrative regulations. And what you will see deleted is 3.3.1C, and that was a deletion based on a rethinking of how to define the work under a permit or the work limits under a permit. The previous paradigm had a 1,000 linear feet work area, and when we sat down with Peak, we discussed that it was probably simpler to just go with a 5,000 feet work limit, and so it did away with the need to worry about 100 feet in between 1,000-foot work areas. So it's just, we simplified and used a new construct for what was going to be the work side under a paradigm, and this was superfluous at this point.
Erin, can I interrupt just for a second? Has any other of our franchise providers had an opportunity to look at this new draft?
This was on the website, and we did not receive any other comments. The only other comments we received from anybody besides Peak were from Century Link, and we got those comments on September 30th. And they were minor, and we essentially made those changes, and we walked council through that on October 1st.
Does that satisfy our obligation?
Absolutely. It's the legislation.
Thank you.
The changes on page six are, while they look like a number of bullets have been added, they are grouped under the heading of what needs to be contained within the pre-work sketch plan that is submitted by the permit applicant that hadn't been very well defined. And so working with Peak, we have defined that now. The purpose is to make sure that the city has something that allows the city to understand where the permit holder is going to be working, what direction they're going, and something more than a pictorial on the back of a napkin. So we move forward with this. I will point out that with regard to the fine tuning that was done at the 6:15 meeting this afternoon, the first bullet is going to be reworked. Actually, the first bullet is going to be renewed. And so I would ask that council pass this the way it is, and we will bring you an amendment, a first amendment of this, that will include these various fixes, because, and I will tell you why. First off, this was sent to the publisher yesterday, which it always is when we can advance, and it is going to, it's set for publication next Wednesday in the form that you see it in front of you, with the redlining in front of you. It's $630 every time we republish this. And so rather than make changes tonight so that we have to republish it in a further week away from, a further two weeks from tonight, we will just simply bring you a discreet first amendment that will eliminate the first bullet and address some of the other fine tuning that I'll bring up tonight. And we have full agreement from Peak that they were comfortable with that approach. So again, although maybe a number of bullets, they are captured under the same purpose, and that is to provide enough information on a construction plan or a sketch plan so that city staff knows what it is, what work it is they're priming. Page 363, that was a request made specifically by Peak to add some language that the city will do its best to act on completed permit applications in a reasonable time period. And we are comfortable with that. Peak is comfortable with that. They told us that this evening, although they did raise it in their 3:30 comments, they did tell us this evening that they are comfortable with this now. 391, there was some confusion as to exactly what the five percents, amending a permit so that permit quantity increases by more than 5% or that under 5% could be included in an existing permit. And as we walked through it and talked through it with Peak, it wasn't that helpful to them. It was in there with the intent of being helpful to someone who had the permit. They felt that that wasn't especially helpful, and the fact that we had changed the work site under a permit from 1,000 feet to 5,000 feet, it no longer was considered an issue. With respect to the change at the end of 3.9.9, that was also added as a response to Peak's request to make sure that there was this notion of allowing design engineering followed by construction, that you could include that into a permit, and that there would then be a permit amendment fee that would attach to that. The permit amendment fee you'll see is recommended and presented for council in Resolution 796 to be $55. So you'll see that later. I would also point out that we discussed as a fine tuning measure this evening, just to make it clear that the permit amendment isn't only permitted in order to address a phasing, but there may be other times when a permit amendment would be allowed. The permit amendment fee is now attached to the permit extension provision, so again, that's 50 proposed and recommended for council to be $55. Section 3.12 -- Section 3.12 is one of those fine tuning sections that we will address in the later amendment, but we are recommending that we change the time, the advanced notice that must be given by any permit holder for a final inspection from a strict 24 hours to within one working day.
Excuse me, that's not redlined, am I right?
That's not redlined. And that just happened today at the 6:15 meeting.
Can I state that please?
Yes. So when that will come, okay, so that will come back to council as in a moment. It's not presented to you to approve tonight.
What's the change though?
The change would be to substitute A, in the second line, substitute A minimum of 24 hours to within one working day.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next change is on page 10, section 4.12. We're up to five locations. Again, goes away because we have a different way of looking at the work site under a permit.
Can I ask a question? Changing that to 5,000 linear feet, square feet, what does that mean?
It's linear feet. May I let the city engineer follow up on that answer, please?
Original concept for the permit allowed five locations for linear type construction, which is typically trenching or directional boring, to have five locations of up to 1,000 feet. So rather than having five discrete locations or up to five discrete locations, we said, okay, let's just, we'll allow a permit for up to 5,000 linear feet of trenching or directional boring. And it's a cumulative 5,000 feet. So it could be disjointed. It doesn't have to necessarily be continuous, but it'll be cumulative distance.
How much distance then would you allow between, between the trenching, if it's a trenching operation or any other type? So if it's cumulative, cumulative over the city?
Yes, over the city. So you could have, let's say, a location down by Safeway of 1,000 feet and a location over by Meadowwood Park of 1,000 feet for a total cumulative distance of 2,000 feet. So, and that could be covered under one permit and it would be adequately depicted on the sketch plan or construction drawing so we know exactly where that is. Does that make sense? Thank you.
The intent for that was to provide maximum flexibility to whoever might be doing this work, but yet still give us the full information we need to know where they're doing the work.
Well, then the question is if they don't, knowing that they have a cumulative allowance in one permit for 5,000 feet, you would assume then that they would provide the sketch maps for every location?
Correct.
And if they did not and came back and said, well, it's going to be in my, my total cumulative authority of 5,000 feet?
They would have the ability to do an amendment to the permit?
Okay.
Follow up, Erin and Bill. How was that number determined? Is there any kind of guidance with respect to other municipalities? Was it a purely negotiated figure? Can anyone answer that?
Well, it was two things. It was a carryover from our original ISP permit process, which allowed five locations.
And how many feet?
We didn't specify a linear length in the original permit. So we did look at other municipalities and what their constraints were. And since we had the original permit of, the original revised new permit of five locations, we just kept it to be consistent. So it's a carryover from the previous permit system plus our research with other entities.
So there was some guidance?
And it's measured, it's measured linearly along that linear feature.
And it was non-contiguous in the guidance?
I'm not sure.
The 5,000 feet did not have to be one piece, it was non-contiguous sections to be determined by the vendor, the entity doing the work?
It does not need to be contiguous.
But the guidance directed that or you determined it?
We determined that in this part of this revised permit.
Thank you.
You're using the term guidance or precedence?
Precedent, some of the.
Of municipality?
Yeah, exactly. Your research directed, I'm trying to get a sense whether we're being consistent or inconsistent with prevailing municipal standards.
Well, there's a lot of different standards out there. We researched local standards up in Centennial. We ran as far as Kansas and looked at many different ones. And each one has a different standard, quite honestly. So we developed what we thought was manageable for us, for our staff, from what we thought would be fair to those people trying to get a permit. But let me also bring out and point out that this is a permit to work within the right of way. Directional boring and trenching is just one of the many types of operations that this kind of permit also covers. When a contractor wants to come in, dig in the street to do a tap, fix sewer line or something, then they need to get a street cut permit. So we had to cover all of those different what ifs, so to speak. So what we're talking about when we say the cumulative 5,000 feet, that's only for trenching or boring.
So in effect, there was not a lot of precedent or guidance that we derived these from? Because you said they were, they were effectively, I'm just trying to paint a picture of to what degree we shadowed what might be perceived reasonable standards?
Well, and certainly that's what we endeavored to do, but to say that multiple entities have all the same rules and regulations would be inaccurate.
Well, I wouldn't say all the same, but was there a preponderance of guidance that you took these from? It doesn't sound like there was, but I'm just trying to clarify that.
Not in this total length cumulative distance one. No, sir.
Thank you.
Let me take counsel then to section 422, planned construction activity. You'll see no changes before you on this. You will see no redlining because we are not recommending that in the ordinance that you approve tonight, you change this. However, we will be requesting a change in the proposed first amendment that we will bring to you and that would be to this section 422. And let me walk you through what that change will be. The change will be in the third line, at the end of the third line, to substitute a minimum of 24 hours and replace that with in one working day.
Are you in subsection A?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm in section 4.2.2 on page 12.
Thank you.
So the change would be in the third line and it would be to substitute a minimum of 24 hours to within one working day. And the other change that we would be recommending to you in the form of a first amendment would be to delete the last sentence, which now reads, a notice of violation may be charged to the permit holder if its contractor cancels a scheduled inspection or changes the work schedule without providing a minimum of four hours, advanced notice.
Why did you delete that?
That seemed impractical in, with respect to how the city currently operates. The next change, I'll bring counsel to page 13, section 4.2.5. This captures the change in the concept of how the limits of the work under the permit were defined and described, as the city engineer just explained. That takes me to page 17 and Sub H on page 17 is the next section, 5.2.1 Sub H. And this was a discussion on how to get around a concern on the part of the city that steel plates can present hazard and how to have some flexibility with regard to when they are permitted. And so that has been captured in that new Sub H.
And the designated representative could be someone from Public Works?
Yes, the designated representative is one of four persons. It is the city engineer, the city utilities director, the city construction inspector, the city manager, and the city manager has the ability to designate a person in the absence of any of those people. That way the work continues to be administered. The next change is on the bottom of page 22 with section 5.2.9. It became clear that the sketch plan would have some limited amount of information. So at the pre-work stage at submitting an application, so much work would, so much information would have to be provided in the form of construction plans or a sketch plan. And it was also recognized that all would benefit from an as-built turned in at the end of the work so that any person who obtains a permit and works in the right of way is required to submit a sketch plan. And these are the specifications for the sketch plan to be submitted. That didn't really change what was there in concept, but it did bolster and make, add a few more specifications so that we were getting a meaningful as-built at the end of the process.
Erin, I would add that we try to be consistent with our engineering specifications as to the requirements of what goes on in as-built.
A word smoothing of the second to the last bullet was requested and we would be bringing that to you again in the first amendment. And that second to the last bullet is all utilities or other infrastructure that requested change. So we would be recommending to you would be to change all to located utilities or other infrastructure. So the word all would be recommended, we would recommend a change to located.
So that alleviates the permit applicant from locating everything that may be vulnerable to the boring operations in particular?
Right. Well, it doesn't because the provider and the owner of a utility is required to do the locating. So the locating is going to be done by the provider or the, or the utility owner. So as that provider, be it Blackbells or IREA, locates utilities, then those located utilities are what need to show up in the as-built plan.
So it can't be outside that scope? Outside the scope of located is in effect covering everything that would reflect all? It's just it's defined by the fact that they've located it?
Well, what it, what it doesn't cover is a, would be something that hadn't been located. So.
It could be working there though.
Right, right. So what our concern was, again, I have to go back to, the concern was the private sanitary sewer lines, which are at a right angle to the crossing conduit that's being bored underground. In the case of those crossing utilities, those are in the fourth bullet up, those have to show up on the as-built. So what we did, and recall last time and that October first meeting, what we had done was we had taken away the obligation to locate those prior to submitting an application. But to show those now on the as-built because that, that person working in the right of way crosses those and so learns their location. So those show up now in the as-built. And that was really some of the flexibility that we felt was, was something that would get city where it needed to be because an as-built plan is now going to show that added information. Yes.
A question for Public Works. Is there any intention in the future to go from paper copies of all of these various as-built drawings from the various utility providers to going to a GPS source where you just go click and you know exactly what's in any particular area of town, that any new utility provider would have to know that those are there? I mean, are we going to make use of this in something more of a useful environment?
Are you suggesting some additions to the budget?
Yeah.
The short answer is yes. The timeline on that? Not anytime soon.
Well, it all depends on how much we can afford in the budget. We do have $200,000 a year in the budget for IT, so maybe part of that can take care of that. Okay.
And then the final change is really something in the nature of housekeeping and cleanup. And that was to take and delete the first two sentences of 5 to 10, which we had already brought to you in our October first meeting, the notion that what we had changed from the original version to the October first version was the obligation for the permit holder to locate the private sanitary sewer lines before working at the application stage. And as we noted in our October first presentation, that has now changed. What was added in place of it were some provisions that would add to enforcement. And so that's when the explicit provision on the jail time as a possibility for violation was added.
So the bottom line on those changes that were not included in our version tonight really had to do with changing 24 hours in some cases to within one working day?
That, that was, would constitute two of them?
Nothing substantial.
They weren't, you know, they weren't anything that was significant or material.
Changing the characterization of all utilities to locate utilities on page 23.
And I could run through those just if counsel would like. You will, again, you'll see those again in the form of the first amendment. So if you'd like me to run through them now, again, I can. If not, we'll present them to you in the first amendment.
Bill?
I'm sorry, I was reading this. I'm trying to get you, say it again, please.
I would be happy to run through the fine tuning that was done in the 6:15 meeting and just make sure that you have a.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that. So first we return to 362B2. And again, the first bullet we're recommending in the first amendment, that that would be deleted.
Pardon? That's on page six.
Page six.
First bullet.
Oh, the plan sheet's measuring 24 by 36.
The first bullet, location, raw plan improvements to include dimensions to adjust utilities and other infrastructure. First bullet.
But you were going to propose new language for that?
Nope, it's going to be deleted.
Oh, it's going to be deleted, okay.
The next change would be in a, yeah, let me point this out. It would be in the fourth bullet and we would have the word visible in front of culverts. Page six, page six, the fourth bullet, we would insert the word visible in front of the word culverts.
Oh.
In the third line of the third bullet, fourth bullet.
But deleting the first bullet, is that in a sense a redundant bullet because the rest of the bullets cover all the same information?
That, that was, that was where we got to.
Okay.
I mean, is there a difference between visible and invisible? Culverts are just not distinguished? Not evident? Is that what you, okay.
There apparently is.
You know more than you want to now.
Erin wants to say something.
No, he doesn't.
Just thinking, you know, phantasmagoric culverts. How about that?
3.9 on page seven. We haven't added, we haven't written the language yet, but again, that was the concept that more than just a phasing was allowed for a permit amendment. And so for instance, if the permit application had come in with 2,000 feet, then upping that to the maximum 5,000 feet, that amendment was something that would be absolutely allowed. And that is the explicit sort of change we want to make and express that point.
Really only occurs when it's a linear?
No, it's, wouldn't it be any?
Yes.
Is that correct?
It's linear, the 5,000 feet applies to linear trenching or boring.
Cumulative.
Cumulative. Non-contiguous. optionally non-contiguous.
But it doesn't have to be an extension at that, a particular trench.
Yeah, it's at their discretion. Yes. Okay.
We just want to know where the work's happening.
Yeah. Very reasonable.
And then in 3.12, again, that was replacing a minimum of 24 hours on page 9, 3.12. They're at the top of the page, replacing a minimum of 24 hours in the second line with "within one working day." And then section 4.22 on page 12. Again, in the third line, replacing a minimum of 24 hours with "in one working day," and striking the last sentence of section 4.22. And finally, there was also a fine-tuning change to 5.2.9, sixth bullet, on page 23. Replacing "all" at the beginning of the sixth bullet, which is second-to-the-last bullet, replacing the word "all" with "located." And I'm just going to turn now to counsel for Peak, because this was a list of things that I noted, and I just want to get a head nod that I covered all of those. And I see that I got a positive head nod on that, so thank you. That concludes the changes to the administrative regulations. And I'd be happy to take any questions or notes.
So 1251, there's changes, 1244, there were no changes, correct?
Correct. And if there aren't...
796.
And right. And then I'd be happy to move on to 796 if there are no questions.
Any questions? There are no changes in 1244, we're going to move to 796 unless you have a question.
So the change in 796 was explained to counsel last week as well, and that was, instead of an annual automatic 5% increase in the fees that are established by resolution 796, we would instead replace that with an increase that would be based on inflation. And that would then be defined by the annual percentage change in the United States Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Consumer Price Index, with a Dinger Builder, all items, all urban consumers, or its successor index. That would, that increase would happen annually on May 1st because anyone who has ever tried to find that information any earlier in the year knows that you cannot find it for all four quarters until more like March or April. And that summary then of the fees, the other change that you see to the fees themselves is that we've added the permit amendment fee, which is $55.
And how is that arrived at?
The rationale for that permit amendment fee is contained in the box to the right. As you know, all fees have to have a rational relationship to the true administrative costs. And you'll see that what the city has, staff has provided are the actual administrative costs. So to be, yes. And we can certainly provide counsel with an enlargement of this. And my apologies that it is not on the dais in front of you. But you can see that the time, cost per hour, are figured for the personnel who would do the work associated with administering those permit amendments. And that comes out to $55.25. It's essentially rounded down and recommended to you to be $55. And you'll see that the other permit fees have not changed from what you saw going back to October 1st. Those remain the same. You see that there's a $150 permit fee, base permit fee. There's a reinspection fee of $30 per hour. And then you'll see that there is also a table that provides you with the rationale for the notice of violation charges. Those are start out at $100, excuse me, they'll start out at $250, and they are subject to increase $50 for each subsequent notice of violation.
And are those also tied to the CPI?
They are not. Those would have to come back to counsel. I'm sorry. Yes, they are. You're saying that do the notice of violation fines, penalties as well? Yes. Those would be subject to it as well.
Okay. And it could go down?
And they could go down. As expressed in the form of the resolution, the adjustment could be up or down.
Ms. Scott, are we good with everything there?
If there's something that I needed to address, please come and let me know.
In the meantime, point of information, is that the same index we use when we calculate the inflation for our city budget?
Yes.
Correct.
And that's the one May date?
The jail time point.
Typically.
Thank you. So that takes us to the substantive walk-through. And I'd be happy to answer any questions because my final part through of this presentation is my recommendation to counsel. And if there are no questions, I'll move on to that.
Phil, you've been with us least on this. You have any questions?
No.
Carol?
Okay. Okay. Again, it will be, I've walked through the substantive changes to the administrative regulations contained in ordinance 1251 and also those contained in resolution 796. Ordinance 1244 has no changes because we have not received a single comment on it from the first form that being published. My recommendation would be that counsel pass all of these tonight. And that is because with the exception of the possibility of jail time, and then the word-smoothing and the fine-tuning that we did at 6:15 today, and that would be jail time for violating the administrative regulations. So the possibility of jail time for violating the administrative regulations is really the only outstanding issue, other than some of those word-smoothing issues with ordinance 1244, with ordinance 1251. And there are no issues with 1244, and there are no issues with resolution 796, raised by comments received from anybody, including Peak or CenturyLink or anyone else. So here's our recommendation for dealing with the jail time issue as well as those fine-tuning issues. First off, the reason for the jail provision is to ensure compliance. Past history has shown that compliance can be difficult to achieve and issues around compliance, such as lack of revisitation, improper patching, exposed cable, cable not buried at the proper depth, linger, and become costly problems for the city and its residents. Having said that, if we can achieve commitments for compliance on current outstanding issues, which we really can, and have the added enforcement tool of a fine that is up to the current statutory amount, which would be $2,650, plus an annual adjustment for inflation, which is what statute allows municipality to, as a maximum level for their fines, we believe that we can then bring to you a First Amendment that would recommend doing away with the possibility of jail time for the violations of the administrative regulations. It would, as I also mentioned, bring to you those other minor word-smoothing, fine-tuning issues that we discussed earlier tonight. So we believe that you can separate that out and deal with it in a First Amendment, which we would bring to you after we have the meetings on the compliance. And we believe that we could have that meeting in the next week or two, and so that we could bring back to you in November, a simple, discreet First Amendment that would address, that would deal with the jail time and would address these other five or six fine-tuning issues.
Is there an associated increase in fine if we remove the jail term?
That's what we would be recommending.
And what was that amount again?
It's currently $2,650. And it does, and it would be written to pair what state law allows, which is an annual increase adjusted by inflation, which would be the same definition that we had in our fee resolution.
And is that per infraction, or is it...
That's an up to on a conviction. If you happen to be convicted of a violation, then that would be the maximum that the municipal judge would be able to fine you. So it's a maximum amount per conviction on an infraction. And each infraction is a separate offense.
That's what I was getting at. Thank you.
And Erin, could you inform us about, in general, are jail sentences imposed for violations of administrative ordinances?
I would say it varies across the board. I would say that in the City of San Antonio, which is the template that we worked with and talked to folks there, they rely just on an administrative enforcement procedure for their notice of violations, although their notice of violation amounts are quite a bit, I can't tell you what they are right now, but they're quite a bit more than $250. It varies from city to city. It is, remember that the starting place for us was 12.04 of our existing code. 12.04 is our work-in-the-right-of-way regulations, and they're very pared down. And those do carry with them, any violation of those do carry with them the criminal penalties of up to $300 or 90 days in jail or both.
So this would be a departure from 12.04?
It would be.
Okay. One other question, though, on 1244. Section 12.04.7, fees, charges, and administrative penalties, that still contains the modification of 5%, not to exceed 5%. Would we need to...
Yes, we would need to change that.
To a CPI?
Yeah, and we could do that. We could do that. My recommendation there, that would be, that would pair it exactly what is contained in 796, resolution 796. So we would strike that first, we would strike the first sentence, which begins, a long sentence, and it begins on the bottom of page 4, and it carries over to the top of And it would then be replaced with a sentence that would read, "The fees and charges established by resolution 796 shall be automatically adjusted, shall be adjusted annually," and I'm sorry, the word "automatically" shall be taken out of there, "shall be adjusted," no, no, it does stay, it automatic stays, "shall be automatically adjusted annually up or down by inflation, beginning May 1, 2016, and every May 1 thereafter." And then goes on to define what inflation means within the meaning of the ordinance 1244. So again, we would eliminate and we would delete the first sentence on the bottom of page 4, under section 12.04.70 of ordinance 1244, and we would replace it with the sentence that I just recited.
Do we feel that this has enough sufficient teeth? Typically, behavior is conditioned by adequate and proportionate enforcement. Is anyone else on counsel thinking that this may not be adequate, that it may be a little less than adequate based on the potential violations? Just a thought.
I do not, because this is an administrative regulation. I'd rather us focus on increasing the potential imprisonment time for traffic violations than I would for rights of way. And it's not to diminish how important it is to protect the right-of-way. I just think it's more realistic to use, get them in the pocketbook than send somebody to sit in the county jail.
Yeah, I agree with Carol. I was going to just commend the counsel and all the parties involved. I like that approach better myself. I know what you're saying, Phil. Jail term for this seems a little excessive to me. Hopefully, at the end of the day, we get, you know, great cooperation by all parties in this regard. And I kind of, I tend to agree with Carol. I'm glad we're headed in that direction myself. I like that direction anyway, if we do go that direction.
I agree.
Okay.
And as is pointed out, and if it's not working, you always have the opportunity to impose jail time at a later time. If you were to adopt the First Amendment and do away with it, you can always amend an ordinance later if that were the case.
Any other questions? We're in a period of public comment, so we can get that comment too. Phil, you have any sense on how we should move forward now that you know some of these changes? Change the mind?
I'll be candid from a, just an ideal perspective. It's unfortunate that, obviously, Ken has justification, but it's unfortunate we don't have a fuller, because I think when you have the, to me, the severity, importance, gravity, and implications are, should be commensurate with the robustness of representation. And we're at, obviously, a deficit in that regard. So it's, you need four votes, we have to have everyone here in complete agreement. So it's a little bit, it's not ideal.
Well, may I ask that question too? It's a procedural question. If we were not to have four votes in favor or against, what is the next step? Do we go to a second council meeting?
That's a good question. Do we need four yes votes?
Do we need four affirmative?
Four affirmative.
Charter requires four affirmative votes in order to adopt an ordinance. So four yes votes.
And what if it's voted down or it doesn't achieve?
Then there is no, nothing that would prevent it from coming back in front of counsel at a later time.
You can always revisit it.
Yeah.
Phil, counsel, before we go further, we need to make a decision.
Do we still need to have public comment, or we have to make the decision whether we're going to move forward?
Well, if we don't move forward, that's not for me to comment now. What do you think?
Yeah, I don't think the counsel's bound to take any public comment, because I think you closed the public comment portion of the hearing by tabling final action. So you essentially closed the public hearing portion.
That was last time we had the public.
So we can entertain a motion at this point to table or to approve the recommendation of counsel?
Yes.
Phil, I did want to address the number of people. I agree with you, you know, we, on a major decision, we probably should have most council members here, or I'd say all. But I recall when we passed the vote on marijuana, whether we would permit sales in this town, we only had five people here, and the vote was three to two. You know, that would be one, that would be open for revisiting in light of the small number and the very close vote. Another two people might have thrown it the other direction. So, but we don't want to revisit that. I'm just saying that that principle hasn't always been followed by counsel.
No, it's been variable. When I was on council in, you know, last decade, we had, there were a couple votes that were, in my estimation, not ideal, and we only had four people.
I mean, this is a legislative matter. There's nothing secret or hidden about your vote. I mean, if one of you is inclined to vote against, and that is, you know, made clear, then I think, you know, you can weigh that and decide how you want to move forward. You can take a straw vote before you have your actual vote. You can approach it however you want if you want to gain that kind of information. There's nothing that prevents... There's nothing that prevents that.
That's a good point.
And I should also point out, while you're not bound to take any public comment, there wouldn't be anything to prevent you from taking it. Thank you.
Mr. Mella, I'm going to defer to you. I'll say this, I, I tend to agree with you, Phil. I've thought about this most of the day today, and it is a big decision, Bob, and we could make the decision today, and it may or may not change. I'm not real comfortable with four of us deciding on this. I like your big-picture approach. This doesn't have to be done in two weeks. I mean, we can do it in two weeks, and, and everyone might not be as happy, but we'll make sure we get it right with the right people here, and I think that's really important. So I would tend to lean in your direction. Bob?
My only proposal for a compromise, then, if we don't make the decision tonight, would be that, that the urgent permits be allowed to proceed so that they, they can lace more cable before the winter sets in, and I think that's a pragmatic decision. We leave it up to the public works department, how much they're willing to, to give on that, I mean, to allow it to go forward. So that's what I would propose.
I would disagree with that. I think we have a lot of work in this. We're talking about a two-week difference.
Three weeks, actually.
Three, right. So, I mean, I just take a different position. I don't think it should be left at discretion to staff. I think it's too profound to change. Carol?
Well, my, my concern is, if we table this to the next council meeting, the returning to council members may or may not be here at the next meeting as well.
It's always a risk.
But they're, the same presentation will not be available to them. We'll simply be bringing it to a vote.
Well, no, I mean, I was absent the last meeting, but I watched the entire, they can watch the entire proceeding tonight, and I think it's incumbent upon them to do that, to make a full, as full a representation of the proceeding as possible, so that's part of the charge, I think. So they really wouldn't, they would miss perhaps an opportunity, obviously, they weren't here, but they'd get the next best approximation of that.
I'm inclined to vote on it tonight, but if I'm the only one who's willing to do that, then I won't refrain.
Yeah, I think that the changes that we're going to see at the next meeting are very inconsequential, very minor editing, and I'm, I'm prepared to vote on it tonight, too.
Okay, then, call for a motion, and we'll have a vote.
I move to, do we go with the first two, or one at a time?
Or three, two?
I would recommend that you, you need three set of votes, and so I think you should start with ordinance 1244, and then you would take 1251, and then you would take Resolution 796.
Okay. Well, I move to approve ordinance number 1244, amending title to...
With these amendments.
With these amendments, as discussed, as presented by our city attorney.
Second.
Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
No.
Matthew? Oops, pardon me. Mella?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Two votes, two-two, motion does not carry.
If that's the case, we can entertain a motion to table all three until our next meeting.
Can we, though? They've just voted down one of them.
Well, we have a...
No, no, you didn't vote it down.
Yeah.
It's a tie vote, kicks it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that a reasonable approach?
Mm-hmm, certainly.
So we need a motion to table these three?
Well, the first one, table is automatic, I almost, I almost told Phil it will automatically be moved to your next meeting.
Should we do the other two individually?
Yes, please.
Okay. So motion approved, ordinance number 1251, moved to our next meeting, which is November 5th.
Second.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Well, it would be, if we had two no's and two yeses, that means that motion doesn't pass, and therefore it doesn't get deferred to the next meeting.
It does get deferred.
It gets deferred.
Whatever.
Thanks, Bob. All right. I'll make a motion, then, to move Resolution number 796 and table it until our November 5th meeting.
Second.
Suzanne?
Mella?
Yes.
Carlson?
Abstain.
No, that's not, the charter doesn't allow, the charter doesn't allow that.
One way or the other.
Awesome.
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries three, one.
Thank you very much, council. I need to step away from the dais and just visit with council for a peek, and so just excuse my absence for a minute.
Okay. Is Ms. Scott here?
She's in the back.
Okay, great.
Mayor, did you, did you want to address any comments to Ms. Scott?
Just for a minute, if I could.
Okay.
Before you meet? I just want to say this before you all meet. I applaud the effort that both council have worked on for the last couple of weeks and come to this decision. I know that it hasn't been easy, and it's been a long process, so thanks very much for working with that. And then I'll apologize in a sense. I know people would like to have this completed today. Understand that we're trying to do the right thing, and I think, I hope that you will agree that having a full council makes all the sense in the world. I know we're not guaranteed that everyone's going to be here next week or in three weeks, but typically, we'll have at least five or six here, so apologies if that's the right word. We're trying to do things the right way, and so we'll move forward. Again, I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Okay. We will move on to item number 10B, and David Butterrey.
That's the budget?
That is the budget.
We're going to get Councilman Matthews?
Thank you. Should we take, we probably have you two. Okay. Let's reconvene at 8:25.
Well, I asked that question, Carol. You can abstain, but it's considered a positive vote.
Yeah. I asked that because it wasn't clear in there, and I asked, can you abstain? And now I have the answer.
Voice your discretion.
Nice.
Want to abstain?
That's good. I want to revisit marijuana, though.
There's one, there's two of us here that don't want to get it.
We need to exit that, that part of the charter, too, that compels you to be here at the next meeting.
Well, the charter also says that absence has to be excused by council.
By, by council. So please focus the showing.
Excused absence. I think it says in there, there is a discrepancy number you can miss, or council can.
Well, so just those are some of my other questions, because it says, you know, whatever, whatever the consequence. I didn't see that specifically.
You can't afford unexcused absence, especially all the years. So you can totally, but we need to keep someone on, and they have, pardon me, an unexcused absence.
And excuses, you're out of town tonight.
Yeah. I said, I have a, when he just announced, I don't buy the Gazette, I look at it online, but it was a guy, a councilman, and, uh...
Sure.
One of those Denver annexes.
It was his mugshot. He took, he just picked up from DUI, he crashed, jail cell that he put in there, excuse me.
But, but it was because, not because he got arrested, it's because he...
Well, there's cases that were put lower, violating, and, there was Daniel sent back with police people, and, yeah, that's a great idea.
But there was a recall, and that was...
But that wasn't something council, citizens were...
Right.
Yeah.
Where we were going.
No, I think...
Clearly supportive.
Maybe.
Evident. You were given it.
That's what I said. So, I didn't think we changed the... I just finished that all-time million dollar challenge. David was telling me all the challenges he's got, so we were exchanging more stuff.
I just put in new countertops.
I like that. What do you, you want kind, granite?
Yeah. Legend granite. Legend granite.
Yeah, it's granite, huh?
It's Brazilian, that's the cheapest you get.
How you doing, sir? Well, I'm all right. How'd it go? How'd it go?
It's still going.
That's what I understand.
You see.
All right.
Phil Mella. I should meet you.
I'd like to meet you as well.
Carol Harvey. Hi, Jason. I like your shirt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You didn't thank me, because I was here.
No, I couldn't. Last time I was home, so I was able to.
Phil Mella.
Not here.
Okay, terrific. Thanks, everybody. And we're going to move forward to our budget. Let me get mine out while I turn the service of, Mr. Butterrey, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, I apologize for my errors. I'll do my best to approve this very important document in the life of the city. I'm going to begin with the budget message. If you'll take a look at page A, the majority of it I'm going to read into the record, I'll paraphrase some, and we'll go from there. Each year, we informally title our budgets. We've had years of excitement, years of security, years of caution, years of stability, and years of opportunity. I think an appropriate title for the 2016 budget will be a year of commitment. Council decided in recent years to move forward with three capital projects, the fleet maintenance facility upgrade, the memorial park renovation, and the aquatic center. Council made that commitment, knowing that there would be no room in near-term future budgets for other capital projects, but with a firm commitment to maintaining the high level of services that our citizens have come to expect and that they deserve. With that in mind, your staff is proud to present to you the 2016 budget proposal, a year of commitment. This budget is perhaps the most complex budget that has been produced in some time. While we are fortunate to have many great projects going, we have numerous sources of revenue and numerous expenses that will be occurring over the next few years. You will see that the 2015 year in projected, in many cases, is vastly different than the 2015 budget. That can all be attributed to revenues and expenses associated with the council-approved capital projects. What this also means is that we fine-tune costs associated with our projects as we fine-tune revenues. We will be making adjustments to both the 2015 year in projected and the 2016 budget. For example, today, the Woodland Aquatic Project received a $200 donation towards the aquatic center. That has an impact on our budget. We will be making those adjustments as things are more refined. Generally speaking, normal revenues and expenses are in line with what is normal. While it may appear that we have an abundance of reserve dollars, those reserves will be what pays our debt service for the next few years. We have tried to minimize the confusion and complexity, but in case we haven't been successful, we stand by to clarify the presentation. Lastly, this budget presentation will be similar to years past. We will end each fund summary with a calculated fund balance. For the general fund, we have one summary sheet that shows normal operations so that you can do an apples-to-apples, year-to-year comparison, and a second summary sheet that shows the impact of bond and certificate of participation revenue and expenses. In a separate but attached addendum, we will lay out the capital projects, their revenue stream, and their expense stream. The year 2014 ended extremely well financially, and 2015 appears to be heading towards a strong finish as well. Revenues are strong, and the city staff has been diligent in reducing operating costs whenever possible. We have been fortunate so far this year with no major natural disasters, and our downtown is as busy as has been seen in a long time. Council's decision to move forward with the three major capital projects is monumental in what it will provide to our citizens. While monumental, it will also be limiting in the flexibility that the city has had in the past to take on smaller projects of opportunity that have also benefited our community. We're expecting a 5% increase in healthcare costs to maintain a similar level of coverage that we currently have. This increased cost will be shared by the city and by our employees, using the same rationale and formula as we have done in past years. The inflation rate that we are using for the 2016 budget is 1.0%, which is down from last year's 2.9%. Our detailed triennial salary survey revealed that, on average, our salary ranges are about 5.5% below our comparable and competitor entities. This includes that 1% for inflation. While in years past, we have done our best to follow the recommendations of the salary survey, asking for a 5.5% overall adjustment coupled with some amount for pay-for-performance is too much for our budget to handle. I am proposing a 4.0 pay increase pool that includes a 2.5% salary adjustment and a 1.5% for merit-based pay-for-performance system. This will help us close that 5.5% gap. For several years, general fund expenditures have been very close to general fund revenues, primarily due to capital projects that council agreed were beneficial, utilizing our reserve to make up the difference. Expenses have never exceeded revenues plus reserve. That is the case again in 2016. Budget year 2015 looks like it will finish strongly. The projected year in sales tax revenues were calculated based on our known, unaudited monthly sales tax revenue through August, plus a solid... Expenses have never exceeded revenues plus reserve. That is the case again in 2016. Budget year 2015 looks like it will finish strongly. The projected year in sales tax revenues were calculated based on our known unaudited monthly sales tax revenue through August plus a solid estimate of sales tax revenues for September through December. At the end of this, of August 2015, we are 9.30% ahead of where we were in August of 2014. As you review the general fund summary, remember I'm showing you what our budget would look like including capital projects. It appears that we have a huge amount of money. Remember that since we have received the proceeds from the bonds and the certificates of participation, we must show those as revenues. For the most part, there are no assigned expenditures associated with those revenues yet. We must, however, maintain that strong balance in order to pay contractors as work progresses and to pay our debt service. Those balance sheets are kept separately from the budget and are available for anyone to review. Our emergency reserve remains at 10% of our operating expenses, as council has directed. For the street fund, we are fortunate that the 410 fund remains healthy and very useful. We continue to make measured, yet significant steps based on scientific approach each year in improving our roadways and associated aspects of our roadways. The water fund continues to be stable. We are taking more aggressive steps to ensure that we have a sufficient augmentation water supply by purchasing additional twin lake shares in 2015 and securing additional augmentation water storage capability by pursuing a location for a second reservoir. We anticipate reaching an agreement with the property owner on the second reservoir in 2015, starting design in 2016. In 2015, water paid off 86% of its outstanding debt, and they also repaid the $300,000 loan to the wastewater, placing the fund in a good position for future improvements. We have seen a slight increase in growth and anticipate tap purchases to increase for 2016. The wastewater fund also continues to be stable. We have begun the process of funding and designing the wastewater treatment plant expansion. The scheduled improvements will extend the life of the plant for several decades. Currently, we are 15% through the design phase. We anticipate construction for the expansion to start in 2016. This budget, coupled with the comprehensive plan, is the proposed annual work plan and major policy document of the city. It provides funding for services, programs, and projects that can be reasonably accomplished in 2016. The budget is organized by departmental function for ease of review and administration. We believe that this proposed budget sustains our obligation to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars while providing a high level of service delivery. City council review of this document has been scheduled according to the budget calendar on the next page. After review and consideration, the council may wish to add, or to cancel, or modify funded projects or activities prior to their adoption of the budget appropriation ordinance following a public hearing on Thursday, December 3, 2015. Now we'd like to present to you our budget of commitment. It's been slightly reorganized, you may have noticed that. Uh, historically, we've placed the summary of each fund immediately behind the budget message. That seemed to be a bit of confusion, so we now have those summaries immediately in front of the detailed sheets. We'll see how that goes. As in the past, I would suggest that we do a page-by-page review of the budget funds that are shown on the list tonight, general fund, et cetera, and answer questions as we go. Certainly not line-by-line, but page-by-page seems to have worked well in the past. I think council would prefer a different approach. If you just wanna nod your heads, we'll all go home early, but we're prepared to go page-by-page and we'll do whatever you ask us to do. I would ask, however, that if you're, if you have questions as they relate to our capital projects, let's hold those to the end. Let's have our discussion on the normal O and M things, and then at the end, if you wanna talk about the capital projects, we can certainly do that. I do think that the insertion of the capital projects adds a level of complexity that perhaps we can separate and talk O and M and then talk capital projects. Is council okay with that approach?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Then we stand by this evening to visit with you on the general fund, the grant fund, three debt service funds, and the street capital improvement funds. Council will recall that you can, at any time during this whole process, talk about any fund. We're prepared to talk to you about those tonight. We have a few others that we'll talk to you about on November 5. If you have questions about the ones we're gonna talk about tonight on the 5th, we can bring those up. We can continue that on November 19th and then again December 3rd. What's here in front of you is to finish the budget process by December 3rd so that we can then cancel, per tradition, the second meeting in December. With that, let's move to the general fund. I apologize that the pages aren't numbered, but we'll go with looking at these in the order that they're in your book. And so we'll go behind the tab 100 and look at the general fund budget summary, normal operations. And remember, this is a compilation of, beginning with the fund balance from 2014, the audited number. That's a fixed number in time, it's been proven. We do our projections for 15, then we do our budget proposal for 16, and we'll go from there. What questions do you have about the normal operations budget summary? Excellent, yes, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate a lot of what my questions of the budget were answered before, you know, by email exchanges and stuff like that. Some weren't necessarily answered, or I needed further clarification, so that's what I'll limit my comments to.
Okay.
Uh, what I didn't do was look at what was missing from, from the budget from previous years, for example. And I noted that the county, the commissioners, the planning commission, did not submit a letter this year, or at least it's not in the budget, and I was wondering what situation.
Actually, Sally has that. Uh, we, we refute it. It really had no fiscal impact, for the most part. It was a continuation of many of the... Sally, go ahead and just, would you hand it out there, please? A continuation of many of the things that we have programmed already. Uh, so we do have that for you this evening, and we'll make sure that our missing council members get that. So, rather than review that tonight,
Right.
I would ask you to set it aside and review it before the next meeting. And if you have questions, reference that, we can discuss it at November 5 meeting. Any other questions on the general fund budget summary, normal operations?
Uh, one of my general questions had to do with the manpower survey.
Yes.
And you explained in copies of your email response to me, going to the council members. My concern was the way we provide, um, a salary, and then how do we reward merit performance, okay? I'm familiar with a system where you have a established salary, and then if you do exceptional work in a year, you get a bonus for that. I understand from your reply that you don't give bonuses. What you do is up the salary.
Correct.
From the federal government, of course, that's like having a merit pay step increase every year. Because what you've been given, let's say you've got a $50,000 salary and you've given a $5,000 bonus, or increase in salary, that $5,000 bonus carries forward from there, that point forward.
Not bonus.
I mean, or that additional salary.
That's correct.
In other words, they're compensated, rewarded, not only for that work, but that reward goes all the way through because their new baseline for any increase would be the new, the, the previous year's salary, and you're now adding potentially to that.
That's correct.
So they've already gotten that $5,000 from the year before, and, and then, like I said, that's forever. My, my concern there is, is that what we're, are we comparing apples and apples with other cities that may have a different approach, where they would have a base salary, and then they would compensate with bonuses as opposed to a, a, an increase in the salary that would continue to carry on? Because where I would see it skewed is that if there are certain categories or levels of people or whatever that don't get these salary increases, okay, because of performance, that those categories may then, over time, be shown as very much further behind the other comparable cities, okay? And so, they're behind because they didn't get the cost of living increase. They, they only got, uh, and, and, which is kinda like the merit, I mean, the pay-for-performance increase.
No, it's not.
Yeah, that's what I want clarified.
Well, okay. I bet, lots of statements, I think I heard two questions. I'm not sure what other municipalities do. Very few do a pay-for-performance process. Uh, most do a standard percent increase, which is what this city did for a lot of years, where everyone, regardless of performance, received the same increase. We wanted to take that to a higher plane, and we instituted the pay-for-performance back in 2007, 2008. What, as I tried my best to describe to you in the email, was that the, the pay adjustment, the salary adjustment process via the market survey compares like municipalities and competitors, and identify ranges for a particular grade. What's the minimum, what's the maximum? And it's that range shift that they recommend to us every three years to change, with perhaps smaller supplemental changes those off two years. It includes inflation, it includes everything. What, what I'm suggesting for this year specifically is based on the fact that a 5.5% salary adjustment that the consultant suggests that I think is too due onerous for this year's budget, and that a salary adjustment of 2.5% be applied across the board. So that, that helps address inflation, and it helps keeps us, keep us a bit more competitive with our other surrounding municipalities, and that there be a 1.5% discretionary pool for pay-for-performance. So, if we're accomplishing both, we're trying to keep a little bit consistent with how the ranges are moving within the area and with like-type cities, plus providing a pool to reward those superior performers. So someone who is not performing well would more than likely still get that, that adjustment, because we need to apply that.
That adjustment. Or the salary adjustment. Catching up with the, the range adjustment.
That's right. But they won't be catching up as much this year because we're not doing it to the extent that the consultants recommended, because I, I don't think we can handle that in one year. So I, I think it's a, it's a combination of the two things that you're thinking of. We still want to reward performance, but we don't want our employees to fall way behind our local area. Because there's some studies that say if you have too much of a deviation, you're, you're okay. If the deviation is larger, then people start looking for other jobs. If the deviation's even larger, they're gonna leave. So we wanna, we wanna keep our good folks here.
And I certainly agree with that. But when, when we have range, the, our appendix to the budget is very endless.
Correct.
It basically shows the grades, and then the range is the minimum, midpoint, and the maximum.
Correct.
Uh, so when you're comparing the range, are we going with the midpoint there that there's a 5%? 5.5%?
No, just the range. We would have...
So you would look at...
Just the, the minimum?
Yeah.
In this year, we're saying 2.5.
Right.
Not the 5.5, 2.5. Adjust the minimum, adjust the maximum.
About that same percent?
Just shifts.
Right, okay.
Right.
Okay. I just, oh, um, the other comment I did make in, in my email to you was, was how, how is other compensation taken into account?
Sure.
Uh, for instance, extra leave or overtime or...
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that. When an employee comes in, based on their longevity or where they are in their career, we'll look at additional, starting off at a different place in our program for, for leave. Uh, we have two employees that have vehicles included in their package. Uh, those two employees have a multitude of meetings away from city hall. We thought that, that was a reasonable thing to do. But if I look at their salaries compared to like positions, they're less. So they get, they get to take advantage of that vehicle.
Yeah, so when you set the salary compensation, you take into account these other benefits. And that was my other question, is when we're comparing the range of salary benefits, do the other cities add in, you know, these other compensation forms?
No.
Like life insurance and health insurance?
No, it's strictly salary.
It's just salary?
That's correct.
So, for instance, in the case where we have those two employees that are getting a vehicle, it's just their salary that's been being compared to. But you could say, hey, if you throw in that vehicle, they're already up here, okay?
Well, that's what I handle each, I, I look at each of those individually.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just a follow-up maybe. What if the 2.5%, if that's across the board, what if you have people who are, you know, performing at kind of a suboptimal, the proverbial needs improvement?
Right.
Category? Is it equitable to give them the 2%, 2.5% to, or how does that work?
Not necessarily, and as I mentioned in the, um, I think I use language such as the majority will receive that range adjustment. But that's a discretionary decision that I work on with the department heads.
Got it, great, thanks.
Sir.
Because when we take, take a look at that last page, you're upping the, the minimum and the maximum.
Yeah.
But that doesn't necessarily touch anybody that's in that range.
But what we do is we adjust everyone's salary.
Okay, we, we go up by 2.5 then.
That's right.
That's right. Except you just said not everyone.
With exception.
But it's not everyone.
I wanted to make sure it's discretionary.
Right, okay.
Based on performance.
Absolutely.
And that's, I was just checking, I assume it was, but it's good to say that.
If we need to do that to get somebody's attention, we've done that in the past.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
I only have one general fund question. Um, police operations.
Okay, so we're going way back into the back, 100...
And on, uh...
221.
Uh, 100, 221, 2219, miscellaneous, uh, police supplies. Will that include body cameras?
Officer Martinez has done an excellent job with some grant work. Uh, we have five cameras, and we just received another eight cameras from the state, so we're currently sitting at 13 cameras that we do actually use and are in service. So that will not include any additional cameras. We have enough to cover all officers that are on duty.
Any other questions on the general fund budget summary, normal operations?
Just quick, do we need to increase the expenses for mayor and council based on kind of the overage issue? Did you, or just...
Would it be okay if we, when we, I'm trying to do page by page?
You got it.
And we'll, we'll get to those pages?
You betcha.
But I'm happy to jump ahead if you are.
No, no, it's fine, go ahead.
Uh, any questions on the next page? General fund budget summary, including capital projects. I understand that's where we just rolled in the revenues from the COPs and the bonds, so those numbers look huge, but they're gonna be split down, sir.
Yeah, and, and when you mix these kind of monies with our general annual revenues, it, my, my suggestion was to break them out because those are untouchable, those are for those projects.
Sure.
Uh, and so that we would see of the normal general fund, how much would be available if we had an overrun of any of these projects, or for additional projects, or whatever? In other words, once we've covered our, our O and M expenses, and the, uh, how, how much do we have available for capital projects?
Sure, if you look at, if you go back a page, general fund budget summary, normal operations, about halfway down, it says 2016 net adjusted revenues, over-under expenditures. That's at 543, 512. So that's money that could be used towards capital projects. What I can tell you is that if you flip the page, you'll see that that reverses. We now have a negative balance. And that's because we are going to end up spending more in the budgeted expenditures primarily because we're doing debt service. So we have taken that into account. I mean, if, if the question is, are we gonna be able to, are we going to utilize every free dollar for the capital projects, the aquatic center? The answer is yes. We're gonna make sure that we maintain our O and M, we're gonna make sure that we have a sufficient reserve, we're gonna pay our debts, and we will use then residual monies to make sure that we get the aquatic center that folks want here. Yes, sir.
But in that regard, we've got some projects, like the fleet maintenance, that is finishing up momentarily.
And when, and if there's residual funds there?
In other words, we have a huge contingency on there.
Much of that has been eaten up with the asbestos abatement. Uh, we also had to reduce some septic or drainage or something.
Well, there's been some typical change orders.
Right, but still, there will be contingency that can be released.
Sure, I'm saying that there can be. There could be.
Yeah, it could be.
And if there will be, it will go towards the other capital... it will go towards the other capital projects.
And then that would be reflected in the final budget that we approve later? I can really...
I don't know that that will happen because we're not sure that that budget will be done or that project will be done and all the bills paid. But we'll have it as current as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that summary? Then let's go to the first page, the general fund revenues. And this one, we'll do page by page. If you would identify the particular line number that you're interested in. Answer your questions. Okay, let's flip to the second page. Starting with police charges. Any questions on that revenue stream? Either for the 2015 projected or the 2016 budget, sir.
And I do appreciate your explanation of how you arrived at the sales tax projections and that sort of thing. So I'm satisfied with those.
Okay. Then let me flip to the third page. It's miscellaneous revenues.
Well, I did mention traffic fines. We are trying to enforce, we've hired a part-time officer to look at 24 and try to issue more speeding tickets. Traffic, I mean, red light running tickets.
The intent is not to issue more speeding tickets. The intent is to enforce the speed limit.
Right, right. Yeah, we are certainly not a city that subsidizes our police force with fines. I mean, our police budget's $2 million and I think we collect $35,000 in fines.
Even less.
Or even less. So, but the point is, is that if we're trying to make a policy change that we are now enforcing things a little, especially running red lights, that we naturally expect additional revenues in that regard. And it could be just an initial increase or whatever. It's just the principal thing.
Well, the 2015 projected year-end was right at a little over 30,000. 2016 budget was 32,000, which I think I said was about a 5% increase. Even if we doubled that, say it was a 10% increase, we're talking $1,500.
No, but what we, you told us before, you've tripled the number of tickets.
No, I didn't say that. We've tripled the number of traffic stops.
Of traffic stops. In other words, you could give warnings instead of tickets?
Sure. We have increased the number of tickets. I won't, I won't, I'm not trying to mislead you. I'm just trying to make sure that the words that we use are correct.
Yeah, sometimes we don't get the distinction.
But there's also, there's additional expenses, but that's, I just don't think it's worth...
It's not worth finagling.
I doubt that.
Okay.
Any other questions on any of the revenues? On any of the three pages? Yes, sir.
I made a comment under the DDA budget suggesting that perhaps rather than building with a reserve, that every year they...
Could we do DDA scheduled for next time?
Right, because, but there's on the last page of the revenues, you've got the transfer from 215.
Sure.
And it's proposed at 36,000.
Right.
So we'll take care of that issue under DDA and if there's an adjustment necessary, we would come back to that page.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions on general fund revenues? Okay. Let's go to the first page of expenses, beginning with legislative and administration. Questions there?
Your responses to my questions were satisfactory.
Good. Then we'll flip to the next page. I'm sorry, I believe it is the, was it this one for the council expenses?
Uh, yeah. We had an overage last in the current year budget. So we talked very tangentially about changing that.
The council expense? I'm sorry?
At 113915. Yep, and mayor, both of them went over.
Yes, the, for 2015, the council expense was because we had greater-than-expected participation at CML. We had all, we had six council members attending. We typically don't plan for that many.
Just a...
And the mayor's expense is projected to be less than what we budgeted.
Okay.
But that's in the same realm of it's just a very small amount, $2,000, $3,000.
It's not a lot of money. I just wanted to point out that it was over.
Yes, sir.
Just as a discussion point.
Yep. Anything else on that page? Okay. The next page is municipal support and planning? Well, let's keep clicking along then. Next page is general support and general capital.
And we're talking about general capital later?
There are some components of this general capital that are not the capital projects. For example, the first line, which is the lease agreement that we have for copiers. That's, that's an annual lease.
Well, can't we put that on our administration? I mean, this is a minor amount that really isn't involved in the capital project. It's maybe administratively supportive.
Let's look at that. My guess is that in years past, the things that we were leasing exceeded that $5,000 limit that declares it to be capital. And if we can relocate this to administration, we'll do that.
Because that's only 2,000, not 5,000, so.
Understand.
Okay.
Finance, next page. Finance and parks, buildings, and grounds. Next page. Information Systems and Economic Development.
Yeah, I did have a question to that and you did explain we're replacing, we got some big expenses to replace what we've got in computers and that sort of thing. My concern was how long is this going to go? And you said it could go on for quite a while.
You know, that GIS stuff you were talking about earlier? That's where this would fall.
Well, that's what I was going to propose that we include it in that.
Well...
Yeah.
Understand. That's the right budget area to include it.
Right.
But the budgeted amount that we have there would generally be used by the things that are listed there. I will not argue with you that we need to move forward with GIS. We've been treading water, probably going the wrong way in the current for a while. We have some usable things, but it's certainly not state-of-the-art. But it's going to take a huge commitment to get us to that next level.
But yeah, if we're talking 200,000 a year for the next decade, I don't, see, I don't know how long this is going on. That is something that perhaps could be rolled into to the plans on how to improve our IT systems.
Into the future it will.
Yeah.
Because it's someplace we need to go. Other questions on that page? And let's move along to the Cultural Center, Police Ops.
Sorry, I jumped ahead to that one. I was just so excited about body cameras.
Well, what?
Body cameras.
Well, I was excited to hear the response.
How much was that grant?
We've been able to get a couple away from grants from our DUI funds because we're running a little short. And so it was salary savings that we have. So I believe one was around 3,000, the other was just under 5,000.
Nice, nice job.
In that regard, I was assigned as a council liaison to the police committee that decides how to allocate confiscated property or something like that, revenues we might have gotten from that. We haven't had a meeting in the entire time that I've been there. Former chief Bob Larson said, you know, we're getting there. So just ahead, from my information, is that something that I can anticipate having in my schedule in the near future?
Absolutely, it's something we can work on. We have money that's moving around right now because we just received another asset forfeiture for about $5,000. So those funds are there, they're growing a little bit. The initial thought was to put them towards cameras. I'm going to probably suggest we actually use it towards some kind of a computer system that'll be able to store all our data.
Yeah, well, I talked to Bob. He said, you know, that's where we could get money for the cameras. But when he told me this evening that we have another source for cameras, then that kind of takes the pressure off of it.
It was an unanticipated rainfall. So that's why we didn't plan for it.
Okay.
Public Works Administration or Fleet Maintenance? Next page, the Ops or Park and Rec? Sir.
One of my comments, we concern Park and Rec. How much that we collect in revenues compared to what we put out in expenses. And it's a huge difference. We are subsidizing Parks and Rec at a rate of like 70 or 80%. I mean, a big number. And my proposal in there was that since the county really doesn't have a Parks and Rec department and we, we provide these services for county residents, not, in addition to city residents, maybe they might take into account that, hey, maybe we could do a pro rate, a share based on the number of county kids versus the city kids and cover some of that overhead. And I'm proposing something in order of like 100,000 a year that the county would pay for their kids to participate in our Park and Rec programs. I had that same concern with the dog catcher, okay? The animal control officer, where we pay them $35,000 a year. But on the other hand, we don't bill them for all of our first responders to all of these donut holes in town. And we're, you know, we're putting a lot of police officer effort into, you know, do stuff that is ultimately the county's responsibility. And I've talked to both kind of sides on this and it's kind of a quid pro quo. Well, it's quid pro quo when it's their, the county benefit, not to our benefit. They charge us for the dog catcher, but we can't charge them for every time our police officers take care of a county business. And so I think it's time that the county step forward and support not only, like for instance, not charge us for dog catchers, help maybe out with Parks and Rec. And the school resource officer is another category where that high schools, these schools support the entire northern part of the county's kids. And our city is bearing that burden. We're paying for the school resources officers. And I'm looking for a little more equity in our relationship with the county on meeting expenses that we are in fact providing on behalf for the county. Just an idea, I'd like to hear from the philosophical arguments by other members of council and of course, your response too.
I've always liked that idea. We talked about it, I remember in 2005, '06. And we didn't, you know, quote, "get very far" in discussions. Have there been any recent discussions kind of in that respect?
I'm in a syndicating that actually learning how to run an aquatic center this week. So she's not here. And what I don't know is if there's a tiered structure for the city versus the county kids. I doubt very seriously if Teller County as an entity would provide us quid pro quo because they've got a lot of their county that wouldn't even consider participating in our activities. But a fee structure that might assess a bit more for a county kid versus a city kid, that might be an appropriate thing to look at.
Kind of like the water usage.
That's true.
Issue.
That's true. And I do know that in years past, that has existed. But I don't know when that went away. And I don't know the logic behind when it went away other than it, it's just another administrative issue that we have to manage for small amounts of money. I mean, what's the difference? What is the fiscal difference that we would charge somebody for being outside of the city limits? I understand your point. Let me get the school resource officer issue out of the way. The school, as you recall, was going to ultimately pay for one of those. And we're on that sliding scale to get there. We'll buy one, they'll buy one.
I thought that only went down to 20%, though? Or does it go down all the way?
It may go to 20%. They absorb the vast majority of it. And that's been working very, very well. The animal control contract, we get our, we get our money's worth on that. We do respond into some of the donut holes. But Teller County also reciprocates and they can respond and help us out too. And that partnership exists. So I don't want to try to monkey with trying to figure out how to recoup some of those costs from a law enforcement perspective. But let me look at the fee structure.
Yeah, not just for the county, but the fee structure for locals. Maybe we should look at that.
Yeah. To recoup, subsidizing a park and rec program is an absolutely normal thing to do.
But not to the degree that we are...
How about based on what?
Yeah, that would be my question.
Based on what other cities subsidize?
What do we know? I'm just, I've never looked at it. Do you know?
Yeah, when we were going through on, you know, getting the information on Aquatic Center, for instance, what, we were going to come and ask the council and it turned out about $95,000 a year subsidy for that. And that's like less than 20%. But the normal range is up to 40% that a city would subsidize based on looking at all these other cities. So going up to 60% subsidy is way beyond that 40%.
But you were looking at Aquatic Center.
Yeah, we know that's the case for Parks and Rec.
Well, no, what happened there is that most other places already have a recreation center. Aquatic Center is only a portion of it. Aquatic Center is only a portion of it. And so, you know, we took that into account, that we only have half of what most other people have. But with regard to the Aquatic Center, and you said this before, too, is that since it's being paid for generally out of sales revenues, and the folks of Teller County contribute just as much to the sales revenues as the city residents do, then it wouldn't be fair to charge them in resident versus without resident, like Manitou Springs does, or a lot of other places.
And that could have been the same logic that was used for the Park and Rec fees, because the folks that are going to take advantage of our Park and Rec programs are right around our perimeter.
Right. Effectively pay into it.
Yeah, and in that case, but in the Parks and Rec, is there a similar thing where can you equate it to kind of that logic for the Aquatic Center when there's such a huge difference in what's being subsidized, for instance? And, but the other thing, too, is that has, you know, residents of this city pay, in addition to the twelve percent that everybody else in the county pays for, which is fourteen percent when you add up the four different line items, we all pay fourteen mil to the county, okay? Which works out, and then we also have sixteen mil on top of that that we pay for the city.
From the property tax.
From the property tax, yes. And that fourteen mil that we pay to the county is about one point three million dollars a year, in addition to what we pay to the city. And the question is, what benefits are we getting from the county for that one point three million dollars? Wouldn't it be reasonable, say, okay, well, out of that one point three, could you at least give us a hundred thousand dollars back? You know, kind of offset, because I'm not really sure what else we get in return for that one point three million dollar contribution. We have our own police force, we do our own roads, we, you know, just look at the list of services, and we pay for that out of the sixteen mil. What do we get out of the county? And that's part of the factor, too, is, okay, these are like three different things, the school resource officer, the dog catcher, the Parks and Rec subsidy. It's kind of a, maybe we just say, okay, as a ballpark estimate, our annual goodwill contribution towards these expenses, how about ten percent of what we give, you know, the city provides in way of real property taxes to the county? I mean, that's kind of the logic, is, okay, can we get at least something back from what we pay? And they may come back and say, this is all the things we provide for you, and it's much more than one point three million, okay? So again, it's that, how is our relationship to the county? Now that everybody's getting a little better condition financially, and the city has basically been best financial condition ever since the recession, and we picked up a lot of things along the way, that's kind of, okay, yeah, I know you guys can't afford it, but so we'll take care of it. And this is the time to like relook at that relationship as to, maybe we can start looking at some of the things that we could get back from the county in return for all the stuff, the money we pay for them. Anyway, I thought I raised the subject.
Just, okay?
Yeah, comment on that. In principle, I think, admiralty valuation investigation. As a practical matter, number one, there's not a lot of expense that I think can be shared reasonably. Number two, I see struggles with coming up with algorithms and formulas. Number three, I could see it being kind of a political slippery slope, where the quid pro quos might work actually against us ultimately, kind of a be careful what you ask for. And the other thing is, I think we would be better off reaching out to the county to try to find common interests and bridging that relationship with which we all know to one more, one degree or another, has been somewhat marred in recent years. And I think we have an opportunity, I think, with a couple of the people in the commission to make inroads that way. And I think this would, given the amount of money to be gained, this would be kind of an untoward strategic move that might mar that opportunity to advance shared goals.
I appreciate it. Let's do this. Let's stick to the budget today. That will be a later discussion.
Okay.
Because we have a lot of things to talk about.
But there are like three or four different line items in our expense part that if we had looked into this, could be affected. And so that's why I brought it up as a philosophical issue at this point. You know.
Good. That's a pretty well taken.
Yeah, we could have bake sales, too.
So we go to the last page of the general fund, just in a period, and then the recap. Any comments on that last page? Okay, any final questions on the general fund? The grant fund, there's just, you, oh, you understand grant funds, it's money in, it's money out. If you've got, I don't want to go page by page, I don't think it's worth that time, but if you do have questions on any of the grants, we're prepared to discuss that.
Plus, there's only three.
With that, then, we're going to go to the debt service funds. I'm going to ask Wally to do those. That's a surprise for him. My list is running out. He's eminently prepared to talk about the debt service funds.
Are we skipping over the DDA?
The DDA we'll do next time.
Okay.
For the schedule. So we'll go to the three thirty, three forty, and three fifty. Remember, three forty and three fifty are the capital projects, right?
Are we also skipping over them, the three oh five and three thirty funds?
Yep, we're going to follow the schedule and go from the grant funds to the debt service funds of three thirty, three forty, three fifty. And then we'll finish it up with the four ten fund, and the others we'll do next time.
Okay. I will take a page from your playbook, Mr. Butterby. Are there any questions on the three forty fund? Which is the 2015 CLPs.
Three thirty first?
Three thirty.
Yeah, it's on three thirty.
Three thirty, three forty, three fifty.
Let me back up, I misunderstood, my apologies. The three thirty is the drainage fund? Do you have any questions on the drainage fund? Is similar instruction and operation to previous years, Mr. Carlson?
This is unrelated to the bonds, I would take it, that we issued for drainage, and I thought we paid off last year in the year report.
No, we have not paid those off.
Oh.
We paid off the street. We paid off the three ten, which was the street budget, the street bond, I'm sorry. But no, these still have just a year or two to go, and we'll have those completely done.
And the money that payers out come out of what fund?
It comes from your monthly user charge on your water bill and stormwater capital fees.
Okay. So, I mean, as in the previous case, we paid them off, you know, early because we had the money in the four ten account to do so. Does that logic apply to paying these bonds off?
I don't believe these have a call date, which means we can't pay them off early. Plus, we're a year away from finishing them up. It would probably cost us more than we would say.
That's what I'm hearing.
There's nothing further on the drainage debt service fund. Let's move on to three forty, which is the Memorial Park CLP debt. Do you have any questions, council, on that fund, the structure?
I mean, that's the short title for Memorial Park CLP, but that did roll in the previous CLP that we paid off for the police and public works facility. So that payment, this payment includes paying back the principal on that, too, right? Right now, instead of Memorial Park CLP debt service, it would be more Memorial Park Police Department and Public Works Facility?
No. That's not correct. This is simply the fund that captures the transfers from other funds into this fund to cover the payment.
Right.
That deals strictly with the 2015 CLP payments. Yes, if included in those principal and interest payments in the expense section, yes, there is a portion of that that relates to the ninety-nines.
Yeah, because we had one point six million dollars left on the previous CLP that had to be included in the financing of this CLP.
Right.
Okay, so that's all covered by that?
For all tactical purposes, we use the proceeds from the COPs to pay those off. And so we just, it truly is only for Memorial Park, but it did absorb those others, but we paid those off. Isn't that right? Isn't that how we did it?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are done. But we basically borrowed, had the COPs, covered the costs of those other two projects, and now we're just paying the debt service on Memorial Park.
So we've already paid that one point six million off?
It was, again, part of the COPs, and we're paying the debt service on the total.
Okay.
Okay, if there are no further questions, let's move on to three fifty fund, which is the Aquatic Center Bond Debt Service Fund. Does council have any questions on the structure of that?
Yeah. We've received, was it the ten point one million in bonds?
It was slightly more than that, because we had a premium associated with it.
Okay. Now, right now, we haven't used any of that money to pay for any expenses, right?
Like construction expenses.
Correct. And the A and E fees have been pretty much covered under, out of the general funds, not out of that bond money, right?
Correct, but practically, yes. Mathematically, on my spreadsheets, the A and E contract will be paid for with bond dollars, but all the dollars are mixed now. I'm just keeping track of all those separately. So we've invested the vast majority of the proceeds, both from the COPs and from the bonds. They're not making a ton of money, but they're making a little bit.
Yeah, because we're paying three point five percent interest on that money, and that's part of the annual payments, the seven hundred thousand that we have to pay every year. But we're also collecting that one percent interest or so from investment, or not, you know, that we put the money in the bank, so to speak, like about one percent or something less, probably. So does that interest show up in here at all?
I'll defer to Wally, I think it does.
If you look at the statement of revenues, Mr. Carlson, the very first line, three fifty zero 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 thirty-eight tent says interest on deposits.
Okay, so we got ten thousand dollars.
Yes, to keep the monies flexible, and talking with various investment advisors from Science Bank, Vector Bank, et cetera, the most advantageous for us to keep the funds as liquid as possible was to keep it in the money market fund. And if you follow your banking system, you know the most money market funds are paying one tenth of one percent. However, I was able to get a quarter of a percent, so more than two and a half times than normal. So, excuse the expression, big whoop, but, you know, on ten million dollars that's in there now, we're getting about twenty-two hundred a month in interest on the bonds, on the COP funds, which are still invested in another COP where, again, I was able to get point two five percent, we're getting about seven or eight hundred dollars. So on all that bond and COP monies, we're getting just under three thousand dollars a month in interest.
But of that ten million dollars, only seven hundred thousand the this year, seven hundred next year, et cetera. And so the vast majority of the ten million, you don't have to have liquid.
Well, that's not true. That's not true. The seven hundred thousand is the debt payment.
Right.
But what the bulk of that ten million dollars is going to go into is the construction of the actual Aquatic Center.
Okay, that's right. Yeah, you are going to use that, yeah, for construction over the next year or so.
Right.
Correct. Okay, thank you for that explanation. Okay.
Anything else on debt service? Let's move on to four ten, and I did the summary, and then Bill can cover the questions that you may have on the details.
We should all have this kind of money.
Yeah, this is, this is a pretty powerful fund, and we're using it as it was intended to do.
And we're spending a lot of it over the next year.
Which is why we're not predicament Colorado Springs, isn't it?
Exactly.
You know, that's an excellent point. We've got an excellent pavement management plan. We're going to be introducing the stormwater management plan. We're taking care of business, we're doing a lot of cash as it relates to the fleet maintenance facility. We're using a lot of four ten cash for Memorial Park and for components of the Aquatic Center.
Would any part of the four ten fund be used for some of the proposed traffic study recommendations?
Not in sixteen. Possibly in future years.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I had a number of questions on the capital outlay portion of this budget. One had to do with.
Well, we're with the four ten. So we're done with the summary, we're flipping?
Yeah, yeah, I did now for the extra, no questions over the summary, other than it impacts on.
Bill, if you'd handle those?
Yes, sir. I'll put them.
Okay. Earlier this evening, we asked Peak Internet, when getting a permit, to give us some basic information, what scope are we building? Okay? I'm asking that the city provide counsel with that same level of information, a drawing or whatever, of what is it you're requesting to spend one point three two million dollars on? You know, we need a little more detail, but also.
Don't say "we," Kemosabe.
Well, I mean, if we're, we're not rubber stamping.
No, no, I would never ever stamp, but I think it's a point of well taken. You would like more detail.
I would like to know.
And that's why we have these discussions tonight, so Bill's prepared to fill you in on how we're spending that money.
Okay. So that would be one item, and it would be nice to see that if some of this is backed up by the stormwater plan that we've been working on for the last two years, which is supposed to be due shortly, where we prioritize, or at least identify, what drainage areas need to be improved and that sort of thing. So.
Let me just ask you something. So what you're looking for is the detailed year-to-year work product, work effort for stormwater, and I would assume pavement management as well.
Yeah, well, in pavement management, we had that like.
And if that's what the council desires, we'll provide it to the council. If it's something that you would enjoy seeing, we'll sit down with you and show you once that work is done. Because we have that, the pavement management plan, for example, identifies the majority, I would say we have probably a ninety percent solution for the next year. We know generally what that plan is going to look like. A lot of it's driven by availability of funds, but we can happily show you that. I just don't know that the entire council wants that level of detail.
I don't need it.
No.
No, do I.
Okay, I would like to see that, then. And the other, so I'd like to have storm rain study, I'd like to see.
That's not completed yet.
Okay, but it's supposed to be done this fall.
What's the schedule, Bill?
Yeah, it's, we're winding it up right now. It should be done by the end of the year.
Okay, so hopefully I'll have that information before we approve the budget.
There's no projects associated with the stormwater master plan?
In this year's proposal, then?
Right.
Okay, so the stormwater plan doesn't justify this project?
There's no construction projects. There's thirty thousand dollars in one of the line items to start design work with spinoff projects from the stormwater master plan.
Remember some years ago, council, we went through the goals and objectives, and we said we were gonna, after the end of the stormwater management plan, we allocated how many hundreds of thousands each year? Two or three? A lot of money. And we said, we're going to put aside thirty thousand every year for design for the next year's three hundred.
Yes, ten percent.
And then start staggering that.
Right.
So that's, this year, we'll get that first part of the design done for 2017 implementation.
Yeah. Well, I'm more aware of that, that was in my email. I said, this is what your spreadsheet from 2013 showed, three thirty for a bunch of years. And then when this came in, it was exactly four times three and thirty.
Yeah, purely coincidental.
Purely coincidental.
Because the project that's the highest order of magnitude, as I mentioned to you before, is a quasi-emergency fix. It's a planned emergency fix, and it's one point two million on Fountain Creek.
Yes, sir, correct. Most of that goes to Fountain Creek, the Safeway Reach, which is being designed right now, this year.
I saw people out there digging holes.
Yes.
Okay. The second item I had in there had to do with, in the 2015 budget, it included eighty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to reimburse the RLF fund. And is that, are those payments back to the RLF fund now that we've run away from RLF, are those still being made? Because I don't see it here as a payment projected at the end of 2015.
You know, this is one of the reasons why I'm suggesting that we get rid of the RLF. It served us very well in the early 2000s, and we were struggling to do a lot of budgeting things. And we borrowed from ourselves. So it's pencil entries that we pay cash for an item upfront, because the person we're buying it from won't let us make payments unless we do a lease, and then we have to pay interest. So the concept was, we're going to borrow from ourselves, from the larger pot of pooled funds, and then each entity will pay back. So it really, there's, once we pay cash for it, there's no other monies that come in or go away.
Okay, so there's no intent now to pay into this pot of money then?
No.
Okay, that's terminated in fifteen, then?
We're going to finish up fifteen with the plan that we have, but it really, again, it doesn't matter, because we've already bought everything, we paid cash for it, because that's what we, that's why we save money, is paying cash for it.
And that was the confusing part, is what account did we pay the cash out, and why are we continuing to pay over ten years towards that same?
Because it took the peaks and valleys out of our department budgets.
Yeah, I didn't want to go into the details of how we operate the RLF. I just wanted to know, in this one instance, if part of transition to eliminating RLF, we still felt there was an obligation to pay that eighty-seven thousand dollars?
No, because the obligation was almost artificial.
Okay, okay, so it's not. Okay, and then on the last one, we of course have this transportation study, and the committee didn't mean anything on that. And my take on that, and perhaps we'll get to take from other people, too, is that the only item in there that enjoyed popular support was pedestrianizing Quinn Alley. Okay? And I'll get counter opinions on that.
There were school projects, there were school projects that rated very highly.
Yeah, but those aren't really transportation.
There's a roundabout, and there's speed humps in the school zone. That was one of the top seven projects.
But that hasn't, that's not transportation related to twenty-four problems, US twenty-four?
The traffic study was not about twenty-four. It was the alternative routes and traffic circulation everywhere in town.
Okay, so I'll give you that, too. But the big thing was pedestrianizing Quinn Alley. And the board, Main Street Board, had asked Brian to put into the budget some design money, just like your. just like you need to have design money for your, your projects too, forty thousand dollars to pay for, well, right now, uh, we're getting a dollar grant or something to pay for, um, the concept design. And we're, we're using a professor and his students to come and do that, that's like eighteen hundred dollars. I mean, nothing. But we, we're looking for, uh, also forty thousand dollars to do the, follow on from that concept design, to come up with the design so that, should we have funds available in two thousand seventeen, or that, that we, at least we would then have, know what the cost of it is, what it's gonna look like and all that kind of stuff, so that when we are prepared in two seventeen, two thousand seventeen, for pedestrianizing Quinn Alley, or at least have that project there. And so, we, rather than putting this under economic development earlier, we're proposing this is a capital project because it certainly is going to be more than five thousand dollars. Uh, and, and so, we, we're looking to put in, Main Street Board is looking to put in some design money. Now, whether you want to just have a placeholder in there or whatever, because during the year, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, any increase in sales tax would easily pay for it, probably. So, uh, as in, in past cases, we could put a notional amount in there because we don't know what it's going to actually cost, so we get the E E Wits, you know, proposals of, uh, a notional amount to at least endorse the idea that one of the big things that it did enjoy public support was pedestrian-friendly downtown area. So, I'm, I'm posing to add something into this portion of the budget under expenditures, capital expenditures, for that initial design effort in two thousand sixteen.
As I mentioned to you in the, the email, the original line item amount was the forty thousand. Um, I didn't grasp that it was intended for the Quinn Alley issue.
Right.
So, I, after discussions with Brian, we knocked that down to the twenty-five thousand.
Right.
Uh, so if council says that's where they want to dedicate funds, it will be absolutely taking money away from the Aquatic Center. So, I think we just, you, you need to, it, it, and that may not be true if you're-
This is four-ten.
Going under four-ten. Um, it's, it'll have an impact somewhere, somehow.
Yeah.
I'm just not convinced, based on that report, and we have the final report, we just got the draft.
Okay.
I'm not sure what the final report is gonna say. Uh, it was fairly easy to have that popular support for that Quinn Alley concept. But I don't know that it's completely practical. I think we need to finish reviewing the report, we need to see if it makes sense, uh, and then bring that back to council, and that council-
Okay.
Help us make that decision.
And I agree with that, it, it may have received popular support in that forum, but it was one of many options. So, why, why would we dedicate money to that above and beyond, or without some rank order of all of the projects?
Well, certainly, the final report should reflect what happened in that meeting. But the vast majority of the other options, other than the traffic circle or the erased, uh, walkway in front of the school, the southern bypass and the northern bypass and all these others, were, anything that would take traffic flow off of twenty-four and route it through neighborhoods was vehemently objected to by residents.
Sure.
Yeah, and so, uh, certainly, I'm willing to wait to see the, what the traffic study says. You said, you already got the pre-final, you said. And so, in the near future, we, we can take the results of that. And I would like to be able to implement the, the results of that study in two thousand seventeen. So, there's gonna be some preliminary work and needed design work in two thousand sixteen.
Two thousand seventeen, or?
In two thousand seventeen would be implementation, sixteen would be the design, just like we're doing on the stormwater projects.
I understand, I understand the intent.
Yeah.
But I think your recommendation is valid. Let's, let's study the, the final report.
Okay.
Well, I, I have given that some thought, and it's been my intent that we get the final report, which we'll be doing this, this year end, and then we'd use sixteen to kind of digest that, look at that and plan forward, and then we start the design work in seventeen, uh, in a bit more deliberate fashion, uh, rather than rushing to it in sixteen, because sixteen's pretty well committed on things that are already in the queue.
Yeah.
And so, we'll use the, the results of that study in seventeen to start doing those plans.
Because we're, and you'll see in the general fund, I'm sorry, the four-ten.
I have every dollar planned and programmed in there right now, for some.
I could easily find forty, forty thousand dollars out of two point three seven eight million dollars.
I would recommend number one, is there support for this? No, I cannot agree. So, let's, let's move on.
Well, I'd like to take the support measure when we see the traffic study.
That's fine, but I mean, at this moment, we don't have it, it's kind of a moot point, and there's no support to do anything at this very moment, so.
Right, but I'm just raising the subject because we got to that point in the budget.
Yeah, but I would agree with Bill that we need to look at it deliberatively. Look at it in two thousand sixteen for projected expenditures in seventeen. That's what I would support.
Good. Other questions on four-ten?
Yeah, anything else on four-ten, please?
Wally.
For me?
I'm sorry, Bill, excuse me. If not, I think we're done with today's schedule.
I would say, I, I think, counsel, when you look at the general fund, you know, it's always the long eleven to ten when it comes to budget. It's the thing that we always need to protect. Uh, I think your staff has done an exceptional job in keeping expenses down. Uh, we've been conservative in our approach on predicting revenues and conservative in predicting our expenses. There's a lot of variables, which is why we need to protect that ten percent reserve that you mandated that we keep. We have got it down to its razor-thin, uh, with the expenditures for different projects. It's a ten percent reserve, not ten point one percent.
Well, I have one more question on equipment purchases in my email. I'd also mentioned that you were going to offer, you know, what is our procurement schedule for equip, for equipment?
We can put that together.
Thank you.
So, counsel, with that, we'll look forward to next meeting, discussion on the other topics.
Great, thank you very much, staff, great job, as always.
Thank you, Wally.
I appreciate it.
Get it all together.
Um, and I know that Pat was here, wanted to make a comment, did she give something to you, Sally?
There's, we have a letter.
It's everything you-
It's in our packet.
Leave out on the dimes for them.
Everyone has a copy?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Then, that said, I think we can move forward. Um, I have no, no one on my list today for public comment, is there anyone here that would like to comment? No, if not, we'll move on to reports. Um, we'll start with the student art on the wall right behind Mr. Dingwell, Elevate Your Education. This, this one happened to be, um, brought to us by Kelsey Carter, and we're gonna try to display these around the city. There are a number of beautiful paintings like this that are in the admin building, and they do a great job. We're trying to encourage the, uh, the paintings to be shown throughout the community. So, if anyone has any great ideas, um, I'm sure the students and the school board would like to get these out, um, the best they can. Matter of fact, I might have one at the restaurant, those are beautiful, they do a great job. So, this is Kelsey Carter, she's a high school senior and, uh, it's a, I think they're all Elevate Your Education, wasn't that?
That's the thing, yes.
Yeah, that was the thing. So, thanks for that. Um, a few events of note, um, for the next couple of weeks, Sunday, October eighteenth, we're gonna dedicate the mural for the Women's Parks Arts Alliance at the U Pass Cultural Center from three to five. That should be a great event, for those of you that have seen that mural, it is unbelievable. Uh, Tuesday, October twentieth, is Business After Hours in the basement of Vector Bank. We moved it inside from outside, from five-thirty to seven, that's this coming Tuesday. Saturday, October twenty-fourth, let's dance the Night Away fundraiser for the Pike's Peak Regional Medical Center Foundation, also at the U Pass Cultural Center from seven to ten, and ten dollars per person. Call two four four three nine six nine for more information. Uh, then Thursday, November fifth, Chamber Lunch and Learn, it's a QuickBooks overview from eleven-thirty to two, and call Dave at six eight seven nine eight eight five. And last Thursday, November fifth, is the Chamber Business Expo, which I'm sure is sold out or it will be. Uh, U Pass Cultural Center from five to seven. Um, and that's all I have. Counsel? Okay, would you like to start?
Yes, uh, last night, um, the Charter Review Committee met again, and Erin, appreciate your support, and Suzanne, as always. Uh, pretty productive meeting, we covered five more potential amendments to be, um, introduced on a possible valid initiative in April. Uh, we'll probably finish up our effort, um, early December. Our intent is to put it on the agenda for initial posting in, uh, in early January, and I think it would be the second council meeting in January that we'll actually have a public hearing on ordinances. So, um, most of our recommendations will be housekeeping, a couple might be substantive policy changes. Uh, we are still looking at section nine-one-seven, which prohibits public, or using city funds for incentivizing, uh, public projects. Um, and then, of course, we also addressed vacancies of, uh, for mayor and council positions, and we've come up with a, a slight modification to a current section of the charter, but otherwise, it's, it's, it's a lot about cleaning up, um, a charter that has served us well, but maybe just behind the times a little bit, and maybe some of the language is a little bit stilted. So, I, I don't think we're gonna knock anyone's socks off with our recommendations, but we should be able to make those to the council in January. Then, secondly, I'll be attending the C M L Policy Committee meeting tomorrow, and I asked Suzanne to put out the action items for the council to review before I go up there, I haven't received any input. Uh, I will be voting with all of the C M L staff recommendations for various legislation. Um, I've got till tomorrow morning, if anyone has any burning desire to refute any of the staff recommendations from C M L, but, uh, there are several that do apply to our community, so I would invite you to take a look at those, otherwise I have nothing else.
Great, thanks, you know, I just want to thank you and, and your whole staff, or your whole committee for the Charter Review. Lots of work, great leadership, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Carlson?
Yeah, talking about schedules, uh, we had a six o'clock executive session scheduled for this evening that got canceled. Uh, as I understand, um, our attorney, Erin, didn't have enough time to, to prepare for that. Uh, when it, can we reschedule that in the near future, or?
Yes, indeed, I'm sorry. Indeed, Erin, you have kind of a draft, a schedule of activities that would happen between now and November fifth, which is when we intend to have that executive session.
Oh, and November fifth would be the next meeting?
So, there's some things we're gonna, to work on, and then bring that to the council November fifth.
Okay.
So, we should anticipate that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, we'll have a six o'clock meeting on the fifth, then?
Yeah, it's either gonna be six or five-thirty, Erin, and I'll have that discussion. We want to be respectful of your time, but we also want to make sure that we have time to finish the issues.
Okay.
Anything else, Paul?
Nope.
Kim?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir, Phil?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will move on to Erin Smith.
Nothing.
Thanks again for all your work, uh, with Peak Internet and, uh, right away. Looks like we're all heading in the right direction, so, thank you.
Thank you, I had a great team there.
Good process, Mr. Butler?
No, sir, nothing else.
What, nothing? Okay, I don't have any comment on written correspondence, so this meeting is now adjourned.